I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Go follow members.
You have more? Justice Chongway, Justice Martin.
Martin.
Justice Southwick?
Here.
Justice Garrett?
Here.
Okay, we have two sets of minutes to approve. One from the October meeting, we didn't have three people that attended that meeting, so we entertain a motion to approve the minutes of October.
Can you make that motion?
We have a second.
Second.
Is there any discussion? If you're all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose. Minister approved. We also need to approve the minutes of the November meeting, so a second?
Second.
Are there any additions or corrections?
He must, he can't make the motion, he must be.
Okay, I wasn't here, sir.
Sorry, just to correct it before we have to make that.
That's right.
That's right, thank you. I apologize.
Okay, Kim made the motion?
Second.
Second, okay. If all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All oppose? Minister approved. Now the public comment period and the presentation of petitions. Does anyone have anything they would like to ring for the board? This is the dining room.
Is it? Right. Hey Eric Councilor, my name is Doug Towers. I purchased what we commonly call Riverdale Trailer Park. It's the King Street Trailers and one house, and it involves one trailer off on 1207 Main Street on the top of the hill. The reason why I addressed the board and I give it to, I'm sorry, I know everybody's first name, but it's the Controver, I don't remember his last name, but Donna, a letter on Friday, hoping that it would reach all the board members so you could kind of review it. We've had a series of looking, my brother's property manager there for four years, so I know a history of the park, and there's been some water issue problems. I received $1,797 water in Sewerville. We worked it four days, the town oversaw a little bit of what we were doing, and we fixed the problem. I was wondering if there's any way we could have a retrieve of the water at Sewerville. Also part of this presentation, which I think she stole and copied and passed around, I don't know if there's such a thing as mercy or clemency, just because we didn't use the water, I realized I left the town, but the sewer portion, I never ran into it, there's a $1,001 worth of sewer charge. Also from, I left as an example of this request from last year, the same thing happened, another $1,200 sewer charge, I believe on that one. Part of my examples from the town ledger here. $1,241 on the example there. So if sympathy can't get you, could I reapply under a technicality and say, there's a $1,001 worth of water that came out of one pipe but never made it into another, most of it anyway, and $1,240, if there's any way that you could see it to give me a credit on the current bill. I have another sewer problem in the town approved, which is similar, and I have a $23 on our sewer bill for seven or eight individuals for three months, a large repair bill there, but I'm fixing all the problems. Whatever you can do for me, I appreciate it.
Okay, Tom.
Tom.
We will, or Doug, I'm sorry.
Doug, my brother. I'm gonna look at one.
So good.
We got this a little late, so not everybody's had a chance to review it. Some of people just got it tonight. But we definitely will review it for you and give you an answer next month. The reason I say that, you have quite a bit of information here, and you all need to...
I've been in business and other things, I've just enjoyed being a landlord for about five years now in different places, kind of built retirement money, it's like $3,000 one. But I can't believe, like, one of my examples is just there's seven tenants and three flats that I have, and the water in Sewerville's $137 a quarter, and then a couple of these outside municipalities are like, whoo, you know, $2,000, $1,000, and then double, triple, quadruple. I'm new to your political, why don't you guys just join with, you know, the municipalities and share that one too? Your sewer district, water districts, you know. Easy for a layman on the outside to say, but wow, even on 18 King, I think the bill, and there's a family of four there, was $137 or something like that. What is that?
Yeah, I suspect, if you look into that, I suspect there may be some kind of an issue there, because I just, we just got the water rates for all of the municipalities in New York State, and our rates are very, very, we're probably one of the lower places for water rates. So there may be an issue with leaks or something, I don't know. But anyway, we'll get to the bottom of it and we'll address your concern. I'm just sorry that everybody didn't get a chance to read it, so we will act on it, for sure.
I appreciate it.
Next meeting. We would have had a couple more days if we'd all had a chance to read it. Not everybody comes into the office every day, so some people are just seeing that tonight. So I don't want to give you a, not the proper consideration that you need, and I want everybody to read it, so, that's the only reason that we...
Okay, so I never responded yet, I'm glad I met the board anyway, and thank you. I'm cleaning up my little hamlet of, yeah, I am. Even the house I didn't buy, I even created some rumors, and we're getting it cleaned up from the neighbors, and we're gonna make that looking nice in there. Now, if you guys can take care of meetings, I'll take care of over there, okay?
That's very nice.
I'm very approachable, anybody can always call me, these guys have my phone number too, so, any issues at all.
Well, thanks very much for stopping, Doug.
Thank you. When the ice storm comes, I'll park my backhoe up on the bridge.
Thanks for your time. So happy I'm with it.
Is there any other communications? Okay, if not, we'll, no code officer, so I'll give my report. I'd just like to remind everybody that the parking van on the village streets is in effect now. It's been posted in the paper, and it really helps us out to be able to clear the streets. It's between 2:00 AM and 6:00 AM until April 1st, no cars on the road, parked on the road. Your cooperation would be appreciated. I also want to acknowledge Ian's successful completion of the Water Operator Certification Course at Clint Community. Congratulations, Ian. We have two requests, which I'll bring up under the business. The driveway usage issue, and the assault agreement issue. We have received Steve's resignation from the board, effective January 1st, and I am going to be appointing Tom Chongley to take his place effective January 1st. I want to really thank you, Steve, and boy, I sure look forward to working with you on the town board. You've done a great job here, and I'm sure you'll do a great job there.
Thanks.
Do I have the report of Justice Chongley?
The only thing I have is that Greg and I were not able to do our teleconference yet with the gentleman from Time Warner Cable, so we're going to put that off until January.
Okay, thanks, Kim. Justice Martin?
I guess first of all, I'd like to give my congratulations to Steve. I haven't been able to see you since the election, and I know you'll do well representing the village in the town meetings. We sort of need that representation, and I'm glad to see that you're there. Congratulations, Ian, for your completion of the course. And I guess as far as, in terms of the whole board setting here, I apologize to Kim again for not being more productive in the Time Warner Cable issue. But we'll get it done, we'll get it done. Another minute, that's all that I have for this one.
Thanks, Greg. Justice Southwick?
We had a really successful meeting in the Shared Services Committee last week. As most of you probably know, the first attempt at acquiring an attorney to represent the committee didn't work out very well. We ended up three months without any successful communications, so we declined his services and moved on to another. Having said that, we met last week with a gentleman named Donald Biggs, and he's going to represent our committee to establish an intermunicipal agreement, get the ball rolling again for our shared services grant. He's got some things to do in order to get us all up to speed on it, so it's going to take another week or so, but we've asked him to give us a timeline as to when we can expect this intermunicipal agreement, because we've pretty much lost six months in the timeframe that we have to go about properly utilizing $300,000 of grant money. Juanina was there, I was there, Mike was there, and representatives from the town, Champlain and the village, Ross's Point. We may, I mean, this group, I'm saying we, because I'm still here, but there may need to be a certain amount of money set aside in order to get the grant money started. For instance, we receive our first bills from the attorney, there really isn't any upfront money from the grant, which is kind of ironic, you can't spend the money out of the grant until you spend some of your own money and then get reimbursed for that money, so you're going to see something along those lines to the tune of, we talked initially of $5,000 per municipality put into an account, so that we have some money to start with in order to draw down against any expenses that we incur. That's pretty much all I have right now, but I want to tell you guys, and I really sincerely mean it in my resignation letter, that I've enjoyed being with this group, and it's going to be tough to match the group that we have right here as far as how we get things done. I know Mr. Flumey may have some issues with how long it's taken to do his deal, but we're just a concerned group that want the best for our constituents, and each one of us, and I speak for everyone, I hope you don't mind, have a really unique offering to bring to this board. And every time we've had an issue, we seem to be able to work it out, because, you know, we listen to each other, and I've enjoyed that immensely, and I look forward to continuing that with my involvement with the town and interaction with the village as well, so thank everybody, we really appreciate it a lot.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you. Juanina and I attended a really wonderful grant writing class at Potsdam, it was, gave me lots of great ideas and a whole avenue of people to use as resources for getting grants. So I think it's going to be very helpful having more people available to write grants for the village, and so I wanted to let you know, it was very productive, it was very good. Second, the decorating contest will be judged next week, there's some fierce competition out there, so for all of you who have not decorated yet, you need to get out there and get those lights up. I'm going to be taking some pictures and submitting them to the WPTZ Light Show, because there's some really good lights around here. Check out my home, it's one of the best ones, and it can't win, but it's really nice looking. And if you go down on South Street, there's a truck that has been decorated. The rumor is, the wife said, why don't you put lights on it, it's decorating the yard already, and so the husband went out and decorated the truck, and it's really cool. So you've got to make sure you go down and take a look at Ben's place in the truck, it's really nice, we've got a lot of beautiful things out there, so please take a look, and we will have the winner at the January meeting. I talked with, I met with a gentleman who's interested in purchasing Champlain Elementary School, spent over an hour and a half in the school with him. We have not connected since he's run some numbers on it, but he seemed very interested if numbers would work for him, so things are there, nothing more to report on that at the moment. Let's see. Oh, congratulations to Ian, you've already been told that, congratulations to him for getting your water license, that's awesome, passing the course. And that's it for me.
Thank you. That was the report for Trevor.
Everybody's been tapped with the expense and revenue report for October, November, excuse me.
Okay, at this time, I entertain a motion to pay the warrant in November.
We have a few changes on the warrant. Yes. First of all, we need to reduce the PERMA bill, which Jeff and I went over and spoke with Darlene this morning regarding the insurance, and a few weeks ago, we sent a letter to PERMA saying that we were hooking into other workman's comp, and they came back, Darlene was speaking with them, came back with a 14% reduction rate.
Oh, amazing.
Which we have been with PERMA for so long. So our decrease went, our bill was $17,704, and it was reduced to $14,807, which is $2,800.
So does that mean we can reduce it for the last five years by $2,800?
I don't think it goes that way.
No?
Okay, that's one. She also presented us with our annual insurance bill, which we need to add, which is $17,488 to come out of AFNG accounts.
What was it last year?
$17,285, there's $203 difference, an increase this year versus last year.
There was some of it went down, some of it in.
Yeah. Actually, I've copied everybody with those figures, the 2006 and 2007 figures. And the other bill that we need to add is when Bayview did the repairs, we still have a balance of $307 that needs to be paid for parts.
And was that the water tank?
Yes.
No.
Was it the water tank?
It was the water supply going to the pump house when they installed the remodel of the, yeah, when they redid the new pump, the visual estimate, so they needed different parts, so it was $300 above the original.
Fit for an extra control for the water.
Yeah, spare control.
Okay, I entertain a motion to accept the warrant with those changes?
So note.
There are second?
Second.
Any discussion?
With the PERMA, did you get quotes from other people, like you said in the letter?
Yes, we did. We got one from, it was New York Alliance, that Jeff had asked me to call them and ask them, their quote goes on our budget, their quote was $22,000. They've also applied two other, two other different workman's comp plans, but because of our experience rate, they declined to quote.
Thank you. My other question I had on this is the youth. We had a contract for an expense of $4,500, and we are over again this year by $724.99. Did she, has a detailed bill been submitted on this of all expenditures?
From Jane at the town, yes. We actually have to pay for the swimming bus, we pay a share of the swimming bus for the summer program. We also have to lease the bus for the ski program that the school has a ski program, but the youth commission has to pay for the bus, pay a share of the gas, the coaches for the village. I really think we need a more detailed budget from Tammy regarding what she needs for coaches, supplies.
Any other questions, group?
No, I was just wanting to assess the rate in the understanding.
The Jane, yeah, the town does, Linda Prada and Jane get together, and she gets, the town pays all the bills, and then the village of Ross's Point pays a portion, and the town pays, we pay a portion of it.
We know how that's determined? You know, like with the bus for skiing, how do we, how do they determine what portion is each municipality's responsibility?
I can get out, I don't know the exact figures, but I just know what she sends me, everything's broken down.
I had never heard about the bus before.
The swim program's always been there, but the ski program...
Yes, but the ski program, I never heard that.
Okay, we have a motion, we have any further discussion? Not, Justice Chongley?
Aye.
Justice Martin?
Aye.
Justice Southwick?
Aye.
Justice Garrett?
Aye.
You have more?
Would you like me to talk with Tammy about during the budget? We'll be working with her on getting a budget to us for our budget process.
That would be a good idea, I'm sure everyone is wondering where exactly that goes.
I'll give her a call.
Ian will let you start, but we'll have to cut you off probably a little bit into it for the public hearing, but we'll let you continue after.
I'll make it quick and simple. The belt press is upon Jackson, ready to go, I'm just waiting for the contractor to have an open window for the footers, so to set on that, and it took a while, because we're waiting in line, so that's a process, I know it's taking forever, but it'll be done hopefully by the end of the year. Christmas lights tomorrow, working with Mr. Southwick regarding that, and tomorrow is our open window to get a guy to drive a boom truck around and put those up, so first thing tomorrow morning, from 8 to noon, we'll be doing a Dodge truck that will be picked up this week from a company in Canada, I'm hoping they'll call this week, they said three to five days, we dropped it off last week, so it'll be done this week, ready for plowing. And something that I'll need to discuss, I believe with Craig, is the names of the streets. Kelly Donahue from the Safety 911 Commission, we have to turn the paperwork in that says what streets we have in the village, and I want to get those street names and stuff like that added to that, so it's on the roster, recognizes one of our village's streets, and we need a name for that, and the house number and stuff like that. We'll figure all that out.
Yeah, we'll name them.
And that's...
We already submitted something, I thought at one time, Horizon Heights for the main road, and then Racine Hill going up.
Right. And I'll work with those guys, determine whether or not they're a lane, a street, a drive, the 911 folks determine that.
Oh, okay.
But the main name is important. That's all.
Okay. They did it for you, Steve, because it was your last chance, huh? Push it right out there. Okay, well, either of you can correspond, if you can get something to do.
Correspondence from Clinton County Health Department regarding boil water order for metal lane. Correspondence from Clinton County Health Department regarding boil water order being lifted for metal lane. Correspondence from State of New York Department of Health and EFC regarding intended use plan for the drinking water state revolving fund. Current and proposed sand salt contract with the town of Champlain. Letter of intent to PERMA regarding workman's compensation policy. Letter to New York State Electric and Gas regarding street lighting at the Horizon Heights subdivision. Letter to New York State Emergency Management Office regarding by annual certificate for buyout properties. Letter of support for skate park for Village of Champlain, from Village of Champlain Board Trustees. Resignation letter from trustee Steven Southwick. Water sample results from Clinton County Health Department.
Okay. Okay, I think this would be a good time to put the meeting in recess, and again, the public hearing, I have seven, I don't know, it's a little slow. Okay, I'd like to open the public hearing on the Horizon Heights subdivision. Does anyone have any comments? If not, we close the public hearing. And call the meeting back in order. Okay, we're old business, or are we...
Excuse me, I guess I have a question then.
Let's, want me to open the hearing back up, or just have a question?
Probably, I don't know, I don't know the proper procedure. Is there going to be a vote or something later on, or...
Yeah, we have to have the hearing first to hear if anybody has any comments for or against.
So, okay, so there's going to be more to this?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
Does anyone else have any other land business? Okay, if not, we need a resolution to accept conveyance of the property easement for streets for infrastructure on Horizon Heights as described in the offer of conveyance. Someone like to make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
Yeah, resolution.
Resolution to the motion.
Okay.
A motion to the resolution.
All right.
I'll second that.
Is there any discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion is carried. We accept dedication of the Horizon Heights infrastructure.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Thank you, gentlemen and ladies.
Steve, I'd like to make a comment, if I may, going back on your, on your comment earlier. I sit on the side of the table too, back at Derby, so I know what it's like on both sides of the table. I do have to say this, the only time we got delayed is when many times, when the opportunity for us to visit one-on-one didn't occur. When we sat down, Greg and the mayor and Don and I, we all sat down, we accomplished a lot of the work together. It's when that went away sometimes due to things, I think, beyond both our control, that the time developed and rolled on, and we had to come back and do things over again. So just to, that's, so, I just wanted to clarify that. At least that's my take on it, that everyone here were extremely loved together, and I thank you very much for that.
Well, thank you, Steve, for coming to Champlain.
Thank you for having us. So is there, is there anything else then, that, I understand there were four documents, so I take it we have, that motion takes care of all the documentation?
Right. I think there's some paperwork that we have to sign, but...
Right, Mr. Marshall.
On approval of that resolution, we date dedication of the street.
Okay, so we're all set. So I'm all set to leave then. If there's nothing else you need from me?
More houses.
Excuse me?
More houses.
More remaining. Yep.
Hey, you're going to be plowing up there pretty quick now, so...
All right. Not at the next door.
Will we go up and stake that out, if you want? I can go up with you and stake that out tomorrow. Okay.
Yeah, they'll get the feel of it.
Yeah, I'll be around tomorrow and next day, if you want to scoot up. I don't know, when does, when does the plow then actually take over?
Well, it's ours tomorrow, so, keep those papers signed.
Boy, I can't wait to start plowing you. How come my produce ain't plowed? Just kidding. All right, thank you, everybody. I don't see you guys before holidays and Christmas, thank you very much.
Merry Christmas.
Oh, before I leave, just introduce you, this lady is from Champlain, Renee Bosley, she's working for us now, she's going to be my administrative assistant here, we're going to open up an office, so we're here for the full, for the whole duration of getting all this done. Traveling back and forth from Derby just doesn't work, so we're here, and I figure to get everything done is going to take at least 10 years, so I'll be talking to you for a long time to come. Thank you, Ian, thank you very much.
We have a, related with that salt-sand agreement, you have a recommendation regarding that?
I would like to see some more discussion on this, just giving a look at this, I think we need to sit down with the contractors, there's one paragraph towards the end of this document, I would like to discuss with the town officials, and have a little, have a little more input with Alan and Ian on this, as well as the town representatives. guess, as well as the town representatives. I suppose next week would be soon, we'll have to get this settled, you know, and look at it. There's a couple parts here about convincing plowing and sanding and salting here, but I, it's not real clear in my mind and I'd like to have it a little bit clearer. So I would like to table this if we could, a little bit.
Did we even agree with that?
Is this different from what we did last year? I didn't see a difference in here.
It is, if I may, this is, this is better than what was written last year. It's more, it's a better insurance policy than what was written last year. There are some statements in here that may be ambiguous to some, but I think it's, Alan and I had talked about it, if you guys have one, I'll just put that out. We had talked about it and I agree with this, pretty much I agree with this document. I think some of the concern is how it says that once the town notifies, Alan is going to notify me, superintendent, superintendent, and once he notifies me, whatever hour it may be during the evening or whatever, I have one hour to enact, to initiate the snow removal process. Snow removal process is, could be this parking lot, or it doesn't start in one specific location, it starts where the worst portion of the village did. If it happens to be on Allen Streets or it happens to be on Oak Street, that's where we start out. And we have to start that procedure within that one hour timeframe once I'm notified. And that right there basically is just an insurance policy that says, hey, I've told you about it, you need to get out there and start doing that. Because if we procrastinate beyond that one hour timeframe, and that's just what it would be, we're just hindering everybody else's operations, making them work later and longer, which is more overtime dollars and hours for Alan's group to absorb. So if we don't enact this process within that one hour, we're going to be held accountable for it. And I think that's, that's the way it should be. You just tell them, you've got to get out there and get it done. I, I concur with that. Now, if he calls me and says, hey, you've got to get it done, and I don't think we need to go out and pop, I'm going to go out and pop. But I can't call three hours later and say, oops, I made a mistake. Because if I do, we're going to get nailed with overtime dollars.
Is there any consideration, Ian, dealing with?
Well, Greg, you want to make a motion to table this and then we can?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to table this.
Act on it, second.
Snow's coming, that's all I got to say. Snow's coming.
Okay, all in favor, or is there any discussion on that? I think we're all clear on some language, I really think we need to discuss over there. All in favor of tableing this, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye. Renee?
Aye, I am opposed.
All right, motion's carried. Okay, we have a group to act on the codes officer agreement that runs out first of the year. I think everyone was copied on that, so the same as last year, the money is what we had budgeted for and agreed to. If we had a chance to look at that.
When we did our budget, we talked about it, where they were going to charge us a certain percentage and his rate would be seven thousand dollars, it was like fourteen percent, in which that's what we based our budget.
Yeah, we discussed, if all free community has agreed to pay his salary out of the town taxes, we're going to do that, but Ross's point didn't want to agree to that, so we have to continue with the same program that we had in the past, paying a share of that. So anyway, I entertain a motion to approve the code officer agreement. So moved. Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
So what the agreement is, seven thou, I'm sorry, I didn't get a copy of that at all. So I don't.
That wasn't, that was from a while.
It was last month.
It was last month.
Okay. I don't remember seeing that. Okay. We're paying seven thousand a year, a year flat?
Yes.
That, that's in the budget though.
Right, right, we discussed that back then, I remember that.
What was happening is we're trying to reformulate the way we come up with how each municipality contributes to the salary, but it didn't work out.
Correct.
So we, the fallback plan is what is in the budget.
Okay. Okay, so we need an approval for that. Trusty Trombley?
Aye.
Trusty Martin?
Aye.
Trusty Southwick?
Aye.
Trusty Gary?
Aye.
Any more aye? And the one other item I had on the new business was, we need to renew the V A N for the water pump we bought a few years ago, I think this is the last year on it? Correct.
No, it's removable on up to five years. This is, this is our second year.
Almost three years. Anyway, I need a motion to renew that V A N.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Uh, Trusty Trombley?
Aye.
Trusty Martin?
Aye.
Trusty Southwick?
Aye.
Trusty Gary?
Aye.
Any more aye? I believe that's all the, did anyone else have any new business for?
You had driveway usage, you said earlier in the meeting, you wanted to put that down?
Yeah, well, yeah, I had recommended that we table that.
Oh, I just worked on what you said, so.
Yeah, well, I was, was going to bring that up, but yeah, we do need to table that because I've gotten together with the attorney and he's drawing up something that we could potentially use for that. So I think we all need to review that. I just got it today, so I haven't had a chance to share that with anybody, so I guess, I guess I'd make a motion to table that driveway issue downtown until, until we have a chance to review the legal options. Was there any discussion on that? Not all in favor of tabling that till next month, please say aye.
Aye.
I also need to call an executive session for personnel issue, I forgot to mention that in my report.
Okay. Okay, you want to make a motion to have an executive session for that?
You want to do that now?
Well, yeah, I also have, I think we'll do first.
You were here first, so, right, yeah.
Yeah, but we could act on that and we could just.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion, we go into an executive session after we hear from the school.
Okay, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion's carried. I also have a item that I want to bring into executive session and that's a discussion about potential sale and lease of properties of the school, so Mr. Turner and Mr. Anko, I assume that's how you hear it, Mike?
Yes.
We could, we would appreciate.
I'm willing to, if you want, we do that.
We would appreciate them coming in, so we could do that first, Tammy. I'd like to make a motion that we hear from that executive session.
Oh, yeah, definitely, yes.
Is there a second for that?
Second.
Any discussion? Not all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I just have one more quick item, Richard showed me, I think last, last year we went, did we have fifty percent fixed and fifty percent at the market, or is that what we have last year?
Yeah, that was what we were supposed to have, but.
I think we got some of those that were completely at the market, weren't they?
Yeah, that's what I, when I was looking at the paperwork we got today, there's, some are market and some are, were the fixed rate and then the others were the blended rate.
We wanted to do the fifty-fifty through NISIC solutions, right?
That's what we had wanted to do. But if you look at, there's one form in there that had it at, at the fixed rate and it's cheaper than the blended rate that they're, at least that's what I was reading on there.
Yeah, it is.
So that doesn't make any sense to go with the blended if the fixed rate is less.
Point zero seven three and point zero eight four.
Right, unless for some reason the, the market rate is going to drop and then the fixed rate will be stuck with it, but I don't see that happening, but.
The market price option, it changes from month to month.
Right.
So that's how they can tell you how much it costs.
Well, they're giving you the current, what it is right now, the variable rate and what the fixed rate is right now.
They're not really giving you a price though for the market, if you noticed that. They gave you a price for the fixed, for the blended and the, and the fixed.
Well, they can't really, they can give you a, a price for the fixed portion of the blended, but they can't really tell you what the market rate's going to be, say in June or July.
Right, one of the accounts, I think I, when I looked it up, the market rate was more than the fixed rate. I didn't, you know, do a lot of research into it, but the one I happened to come across, just a recent bill, was like point zero seven six or whatever, and it was more than what they showed on that paper, so, whatever the board's pleasure, but such a confusing issue.
Yeah, well, actually, I did that to try it out myself and it's a roller coaster ride. One, one month, the bill will be really low and then another month it'll, it'll be high, higher, so I don't know.
Yeah, which house did you go with, you know?
I don't know.
Oh, that's an issue that I'd rather.
But it's got to, we've got to do something by January first, if not, everything will just roll over and we'll continue in this year.
Yes, yes.
Can we make a motion to approve after it's researched a little bit more to see what would be the best rate on that? Maybe call the school and see what the school's doing, some of these other businesses, what choices they've done, how it's worked. Because, I mean, we're paying out, a mother load in NISIC bills. That's our number one bill, next to employee expenses.
Yes, it is.
Yeah, well, there's no, yeah, there's no free lunch there, there's, there's nobody selling discount lectures in there.
Well, no, but they, they do offer several choices and it does, you know, if we can get someone to really look into that.
You're not going to get them to make a decision for you because I've tried that myself.
Exactly, I know, I know. But there's stuff online, because I know my husband went online to choose for us, it goes on there and you can research each one of these different choices and how it has played out in the past. So, and you said you just touched on it, so should we look into a little bit more and then make the choice, maybe do a, let everyone know what the choice is, or we, you know?
We'll do that.
I don't know, can we do something like that?
Well, I think, I think what happens though, I think you have till the end of December, we have to act on it before the end of December.
Well, if you do make a motion to agree to the most economical choice that we researched and, you know, something like that.
Let Ian decide.
That's right. I will make a decision, you may or may not like it.
Well, we could do is make a motion to research, research the.
May increase for next year if he chooses it.
The prices and have me pick which one that we think turns out best.
Yes, yeah, I think that's what you're saying.
So I would like to make a motion that we research this and what Jeff determines to be the most economical choice for us to make, that we agree on that choice.
Second.
Any discussion? If not, all in favor, in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion's carried. Now, the meeting recessed while we discuss the, want to continue?
Now, do we want to shut off and discuss with how we have these guys go in the back room, so it's more comfortable for them? Or you want us all standing in that little back room?
Oh, yeah, you know, that might be exile.
Would you mind? Would you mind?